Oh, the parts stuff coming over there.
I've been over there lately.
Yeah, they, um, so it's under construction, um, I think, uh, April thirtieth is the date that they're supposed to be done. There may be a slight push to that with some of the soundproofing stuff that was put in.
Okay.
But it looks like the progress is coming along, uh.
Good. I need to get over there.
Hello?
Oh, how are you?
Good, how are you? Sorry, I'm delayed.
What's new on the south side? Are you driving, are you back at work?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
What's happening is I was waiting for a stalled train for half an hour.
Oh.
Down in Greenwood, so I go, I'm not gonna make it in time.
Coal shortage or what?
Yeah.
Coal shortage?
I have no idea what was happening.
Something that ran out of gas.
Yeah.
Let's imagine traffic hasn't gotten back anywhere near what it was, all right? I mean.
No, but it's starting to pick up. Oh, yeah. Yeah. I noticed this in probably these last weeks.
Yeah.
That rush hour traffic is picking up a lot more now.
Who else are we waiting on, Megan?
Um, Jamie is on. Jamie, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you guys. Thanks.
Um, Chris is supposed to be here and.
Katie coming?
Hi.
Chris.
Katie, yeah.
Katie.
One more?
Um, oh, what's his name? From the school?
Uh, Jamie's on.
Jamie.
Jamie, oh, he's on. I was wrong.
I think we can probably, maybe we go ahead and get started and all of a sudden Chris the call information in case he wants to.
Okay. Well, uh, thanks for meeting with me. I know you guys are all very busy. Um, I really wanted to have an open and candid conversation about basically how this commission interacts with, uh, our organization, city government, and, and how best to make sure that we all understand each other's roles and expectations. And that's not me coming in to clarify those on behalf of the organization. It's really just to have an open dialogue so we're all kind of on the same page moving forward and understand too that we've never had an arts commission before. And so a little bit of this is trial and error for us to understand what, what works and what doesn't work. So my goal today was to really listen to all of you, uh, more than talk, and then go back to my team and figure out how we best serve the needs of the commission moving forward. So, you know, I guess maybe start with an opening the question of, um, you know, what has been working? What has been points of frustration? And then we can kind of go from there. So what are, what are your guys' thoughts after a year or two of, uh, working?
If I can just start out, because I've been helping Ailey with getting the creative council going and, um, I'll be honest with you, this year with the COVID, it, it's almost like, you know, we, it, it's just been tough, obviously.
Yeah.
You know, because I think initially, right when we were starting this council, the, the creative council, it was right when COVID was, was starting. And so these groups haven't met, you know, in person, and I think it's hard when you're getting a new group of people together to collaborate and, and engage and network and share ideas. It's hard over Zoom and, and so, uh, and I think to me personally, there's been a, a little bit of, it's starting to pick up, but a kind of a standstill, I'd say, for most of last year because the priority was your health, the unknown, the fact that everything was shut down, you know, your job and your, your well-being. I mean, I think that was like not on people's mind. And now things are starting to like, people are like, okay, we're, life's gonna get back and, and let's get going. But I think there was a little bit of, of people like, this is not a priority necessarily.
Sure.
And, and hard to work when you're in this kind of situation where it's new people, uh, but I see a light. I see a lot of passion and I think moving forward, uh, there's a lot of potential and, and a lot of collaboration that can happen and, and because people are excited to get out, to see things, to experience cultural art, art, all types of things. But I think last year was like a wash, like almost like a wasted year, if you will, to a certain extent.
Well, to a certain extent, that's quite true about a whole, whole host of things. So what, um, help me understand the role that the commission views the, um, creative council in. And so, you know, what are origins and motivations of creating it? And then what are your desired outcomes from that group to the commission?
I think it's multifaceted, but, um, Cecilia really had, headed that up with Jamie. But we wanted to, so, uh, with the master planning process, we heard from a lot of the arts and culture community that they really want to be more involved and have a seat at the table was kind of the term that's been thrown around. And so we felt that we also needed, uh, we also wanted to bridge the gap. And so I'll probably let you talk a little bit here in just a minute about, um, kind of the perceptions from arts and culture towards the city of Fishers.
Right.
And so there, there's kind of a really dynamic, uh, relationship with that. And so we really wanted to, to give them, help them create some representation and then kind of be a springboard for ideas and thoughts that we're working on and, uh, gain feedback and insights and things that we can do as a commission to help.
But I think, so I think before we dovetail or dive into that, this is a really interesting, um, nuance in that the, is it fair to say the arts commission doesn't view themselves as a direct representation of the creatives that are in our community? Rather, you're taking ideas and concepts and creativity from the creatives to kind of.
Correct.
Marrying that with, uh, policy and finances and direction and everything else. I think.
More like being able to use them to hear from the community or from that, that community, right?
Yeah.
That are do our work, like, that are do you want to pursue.
That, that, um, that helps clarify, I think, some particularly maybe for my staff who maybe didn't understand what the origins or the value of creating yet another entity would be, but it, it sounds like it kind of is reflective of what you guys do, your role is.
The creative council is also there so that, uh, everybody kind of knows what they're doing. There, there's, um, lack of, of awareness between the various groups, artists, of what's happening within the community. So the goal is to like, understand, okay, what is everybody doing? How can we share resources? How can we collaborate, identify gaps and come up with, with new ways to bring about art and culture?
So you're organically fostering this ecosystem mode.
Yeah, yeah.
Jocelyn, you, you, you were very helpful, uh, yesterday when I, uh, reached out to you to ask, because you've been with the arts groups for a long time. Um, so just so I'm clear, crystal clear, your guys' view of the arts commission, your scope of work, your, your responsibility, what do you, what do you view that as? As a, as compared to the, the city, as compared to our, uh, creative council?
Well, I think, um, this document that we put together at the end of 2019, the Arts and Culture Master Plan, helped blueprint that out a lot. And so my interpretation of that is the commission is, um, oversight, um, making sure that objectives are fulfilled. I think, uh, serving as a bridge from the creative community to the municipality to be sure, like, everyone's growing in the same direction for the betterment of the community. And one of our core values here that we determined was being collaborative. And I think that's a big part of it. And I think that was the driver for, back to the creative council, how that, the origination of that. However, I will toss in now, um, we have had for years, maybe 10 years, in different forms, a collective of creatives. Sometimes it's been administered by the city, like Dan, Dan Donk.
Yep.
At one point, um, but it existed before that and then it kind of dropped off and then it created again. And, um, the idea of networking creatives together, but also providing them a place to get their voice heard and frankly, share creative ideas because that's how they want to participate and that's what they do best. So I see the, please correct me if I'm wrong, David, but I do feel like the commission's role is to bridge, hey, creative ideas coming from the creative council, municipal, um, objectives, and, um, trying to, uh, develop those partnerships and good things to happen with arts and culture in our community.
That's helpful. So that brings up a great question. David, as, as being chair, do you feel like you're getting direction from the municipality as to what the objectives are regarding art and, and the culture in our community so that you can, I mean, is there a direction coming from the city so that you guys at least feel like you're either in alignment or you're not with, with the city's direction?
Yeah, so, which is a, a great question. So there's been, uh, some really good and not so good, right? So like we started with Leah, great, come in.
Yep.
We shaped the, the vision, the master plan. Uh, she transitioned out, Ross came in, great.
Yeah.
And Ross just transitioned out, Tony, and now we're kind of in this thing. So, um, I think there is a, a bit of a disconnect, um,
Yeah.
we, uh, what that vision is for the city. Uh, but when we set out and we created the master plan, uh, you know, we set goals, uh, for the last two years and we've accomplished those goals. And so now we're kind of at this point, like we're, I think we need to reengage and say, okay, now that we've established these things, what is our role? What are we going to be working towards? And so that was kind of my big hope of out of this meeting is to get the vision so we're all in alignment and then we can all work together.
So it sounds like, uh, this sounds probably a little too cute, but it sounds like the vision is to create the next vision, right? So if this is accomplished, if this is, if this plan has been, the key milestones have been accomplished, then we really need to create the next step of that. But the, the, so the big question on the table to me is, do you guys as a commission feel as, because early on when Leah was doing it, partly we were standing this thing up so it had a heavy city presence in it. The question is, at this point in time, as a commission, are you at a point where you guys are driving the majority of that, here's where we want to go next? And yet, yeah, the council or my administration can, we got two council members here anyways, you're gonna have that fingerprint anyways, right? But, um, is it a little less city or administration and staff driving that and more of the commission and the creative council figuring out where we drive to next?
I think that's where we're at. I think we're at this crossroads and, and you guys can say what you think too, but yeah, that's, that's what it feels like. So we've, we've gotten there. Um, we, we have tons of people in the community that are passionate about it. The city has a great initiative too. And it's like, how do we, how do we all work together and then drive those forwards? And we're not, you know, going in these different directions. And, you know, we had a, a pretty rough, um, meeting.
Yeah, I heard.
This is a meeting, this is a springboard for this, but I think it's, it, it says a lot because so many people are passionate and they want some good things to happen. And so I think this is a really good thing and the right step towards that, um, direction. But to me, that's, that seems like that's where we need to go. And I think that, um, we, so we as a city can, um, if we can empower the arts and culture community, we're gonna get a lot more, um, out of the community and, and do a lot more than we can as just a city, right?
But I also think part of our purpose is to enhance, to build upon what we already have. So obviously the city, like Parks and Recreation, they already have a, an arts and culture plan, if you will, you know, they have events throughout the year and things like that. And then, and then, so this is like the icing of the cake. This is, this is, uh, to identify where there's gaps and where we can enhance to make it better. That's how I see it. So kind of separate. So it's, you've got the city stuff, but then you've got this other stuff that is the icing on the cake and utilize this, the creatives within our community in collaboration to identify where the gaps are. But also, I think, part of our role and also is with it, with us having the nickel plate cultural district, you know, we, there are responsibilities.
Yeah, for sure.
And commitments that we have to.
Right.
Uh, fulfill, right? So identifying, okay, what, what do we have to do to continue that, that designation and, and how can we bring the creatives into the picture to enhance that, uh, that, that.
And I guess that, that was a question I had too, and I had posed that to Tony before.
Yeah.
So, um, there's the nickel plate district designation.
Right.
Right? So are we solely focused on that, like this, this commission?
Yeah, that's a great, so that's a great, like, uh, fundamental question, right? Like, was this commission really just created for the, the opportunity to create a district?
Exactly.
Was it for a broader conversation about art and art?
Exactly. Because coming in, I thought it was more of a broader conversation. Like, we're gonna leverage that opportunity, but we're thinking about the city.
I think it would be a wasted opportunity to bring the collective talents of the individuals at the table if we, just for meeting state standards for whatever the designation.
I agree.
So I do think it's a, a broader discussion. And I was sharing with Jocelyn yesterday. It reminds me a lot of when, um, we decided to really move towards this entrepreneurial movement and, and venture into things that were very foreign to what I understood from a cultural perspective. And, um, it was messy, uh, but John Weston and I really had to figure out how to work together. And I could provide to Cecilia, to your point, there's certain things about government that provides the consistency and like the chassis, so to speak, to be able to move something. But, um, I had to trust the, that John, having lived and immersed himself in tech and entrepreneurial culture, that he would bring ideas and kind of own that space because it was a foreign concept to me. So, you know, him telling me we had to have this certain vibe or we, you know, that otherwise it was just gonna kill what we're trying to create. It's some, there are different moments in those relationships where I just had to have a leap of faith and say, I assume you know what you're talking about. And, and I'm gonna support what you're trying to do. And, uh, you know what? We'll fail together if we can't figure it out. Um, yes, go ahead.
Okay, this is Jamie. Um, to get to, to your points earlier about like what we saw about our role, I think, I wa, I always saw the idea that like we were just giving, we have a broad group of people with diverse talents and we were gonna give our input to the city to help kind of guide the vision. Then as relation to the creative council, the way I kind of saw it when we were asked to create it was that there's a lot of artists in the community that have their own organizations. We want to represent those organizations and act as a kind of intermediary between the city and them. So we, the idea was to create the creative council as its own thing, not an arm of our institution, not, not anything to do with us, but as a way for those artists through their organizations to get together to communicate to us so we can represent their interest with the city. So it, and that came, like, came up in the meeting the other day. People were like, is it, it's, it's not really, we don't, I don't see it as part of our, the organization. Like, we didn't go, we didn't go rogue and make a, a side organization. It was more like, let's create a mechanism to create communication to engage them and help them get what they want from the city and help the city get what they want from them as kind of an intermediary. Um, and that's why we put like people not from the commission necessarily run it, whether it was Tom in the beginning or Ailey currently.
So is it fair to say that your guys' expectation from my staff is that they don't really have anything, this sounds, I don't mean to make it sound bad, but they don't have anything to do with the creative council in terms of responsibility. Doesn't mean they're not interacting with them from time to time or collaborating. But it's not as though they're managing the creative council or staffing the creative council. There really shouldn't be that heavy of a presence from city employees involved in the creative council. Is that fair?
I agree. I agree.
Yeah.
And I, I do like what you're saying. So it's like, create, um, to Cecilia's point and to your point is like, create the foundation. So like, I'm in building, so create a foundation. But something that's been thrown around is, like, just create the canvas.
Yeah, I keep using that analogy. I like it.
But it, but it kind of makes sense to, to what you're saying.
Right.
Finding the found, the foundation canvas and then they, the artists.
Exactly that. So I, I, I think we're in agreement with that. It seems like we need to get to a point where the municipalities, um, swimming lane is creating a canvas, which are those opportunities for creatives to create, hopefully a little bit of funding. That would be great. Um, and also some vision or objectives, I guess, um, just to kind of keep it centered and keep it very genuinely Fishers. So I still really like that analogy of the municipalities in charge of identifying the canvas and the creative council, what you said earlier, Mayor sadness about, I think your city staff can just be hands off. Let those creatives communicate with them, network. However, I will toss in, I think it's important, back to Cecilia's point, the Parks Department does programs. They do, they're in that space.
Yeah.
So they need to participate maybe in the creative council as one of the players at the table that are sharing information. Here's what we're working on.
Right.
To bring out partnerships.
As a participant or.
As a participant, yeah. Not as a leader or, and forgive me, Cecilia, I'm gonna disagree with you just a smidge in that really I don't think we should be looking at our creatives, our local talented people as icing on the cake. We should be shifting it so that they're the drivers, right? They're the creators. And what the municipality is contributing, that, that fills in gaps or that is the connector or partnership glue. Um, and we're not there yet, but I think that's what needs to be re-steered.
But do you.
But we had to start there, so that's okay.
Do you feel as though then the arts commission's role is to take the creative passion and the energy and the talents that might be in the creative council or elsewhere and then interpret that in the, in the direction of the city? So, I mean, at, at some point, there still comes this question of, let's say you got five dollars and you gotta spend the five dollars somehow. And, and you've got all these creative ideas. Is it, your guys have thought that the arts commission then would go, okay, I understand what the city generally wants to see. And I understand all of these ideas that are bubbling up from our, a growing ecosystem of artists. Is it, do you feel it's your guys' job then to kind of filter and prioritize? These are, these are the, the objectives that we're gonna go try to accomplish? Is that, is that your guys' thought?
Yeah, I, I do. I do. And we're not there yet, but I mean, I think that's how.
Yeah.
That movement, we should be, um, oriented that way.
Okay. But, I mean, that makes sense to me. Um, when, when you guys talk about objectives from the city to help provide guardrails or, or direction, let's say.
Frameworks.
What, what does that look like to you guys? I mean, what, what are you seeking from the city in terms of direction or objectives? Because we talked about, well, they're gonna be, we can provide resources, we can provide, um, a canvas, and we could provide some guidelines or objectives. What is, what is, what do you guys think that looks like coming from either the city council or myself to the arts commission that would be helpful? And what would be too prescriptive? Like, there's a fine line there, right? So.
We could probably hit too prescriptive pretty easily. So.
Okay.
There was a, um, initiative that came out for a grant program that was, um, life in 2020 or, I, I can't remember how it was worded. Um, but it was very limiting, um, what the artist would be able to apply for and kind of.
Okay.
Put them in a box, right? Instead of saying, hey, like, you know, wow, it's, or show us, give us your ideas.
Okay.
So, um, that was really, I think, we all felt too prescriptive, um, from that perspective.
Right.
So if, so in the essence of productive direction, would it be, hey, the city really wants to focus on, um, in, uh, enacting or creating vibrant areas in this district of the city? Or, I mean, what direction is actually helpful to you guys?
I think what I'm hearing from, from the creatives is they don't know what spaces in the city or what, what venues the city has where they could create.
Okay.
I think there's a sense of, since we don't have a rep, we don't have an art center.
Right.
A performing art center. I, I think there's a miss, um, not miscommunication, but there's not an understanding yet of, if I'm a creative person, where in the city would I be allowed to create or what space could I use or where?
Yeah.
When is there openings in the calendar that maybe Parks and Recreation?
Right.
We don't have anything going on that we could use an amphitheater or we could use Center Green or.
But it's kind of the gatekeepers to assets.
And that's why.
We leverage.
Why we did the council too, because we identified that there are churches that are like, hey, we have this space here that if you want to create, we're open to having you here to, to perform, to do things. So we're trying to identify venues and.
Right.
Times and, and spaces. I, I, I think that's one of the goals. And I think.
Yeah.
Having a better, I think the creatives would love to have a better understanding of where can I create? Where am I allowed to, uh, perform or what's available to me so that I can come up with ideas?
Right.
To create and.
Sure. No, that makes sense. Jamie?
Yeah, I think like, when you were saying like, what is our role? I think like what you just kind of said that was kind of part of it, like the city has things it wants to do, the artists have things they want to do. So then we act as an intermediary to help that happen. And I thought the other night, even though the meeting was like maybe weird at points, I kind of thought that's kind of what our job was. Like, they had that idea for that, that pitch for this, um, the, the, the grants, and then we kind of gave feedback. I think the idea of our group is that we all understand art and the city understands what the city wants, and the city can come to us and we can kind of give our input. So we kind of went back to Tony and said, what if you just zoomed out a little bit and gave them a little more freedom and didn't have that topic? And that, and I, I, I thought, even though the meeting was weird, that's what we're, kind of how I see our job to be is to give the city feedback from an artistic perspective and find a way, a place where the artists and the city and everybody can be happy and then stuff gets done and we progress.
Yeah. I, I like the idea of the guardrails. And so here's the geographic areas, here's how much money we get, here's what you want, and you guys go figure it out.
Yeah.
Then we work with the, the creative council and those to figure out what that looks like. Uh, a nice thing about the creative council is they have gotten together and they are sharing venues and pooling a lift together. And they're collaborating on a lot of different things. And so a lot of those things are gonna happen organically just by that group meeting.
Yeah. So there's, there's a two components, right? The first component that we were just talking about with the creative council, how do, what's their role?
Yeah.
As related to us and the city and what.
Right.
And their second component that you were just asking about is as between the city and the commission.
Right.
Right? And, and that's what they're, they're talking about now. We see it as there's a vision.
Yeah.
At least that's how I see it. There's a vision for the city.
Yep.
And arts and culture is a part of that.
Right.
And there's, um, guiding points. And I see our commission as, okay, how do we help accomplish that? And also be a venue to bring the voice of the community in so that we can help shape it, if that makes sense.
But it does make sense. Um, I mean, to me, the, the roles are, it's, um, very different. So in defense of my staff perhaps, this doesn't really act or feel like any other board or commission.
Yeah.
So it's very different than the very prescriptive and bureaucratic steps that you take for so many other boards and commissions where it's literally, hey, we're gonna manage this. We gotta, we gotta take all of these things through because the state law requires all of these things. And so most of our boards and commissions are very, very prescriptive. Um, I think where we probably have a misalignment is that treating this like that doesn't actually create the desired outcome that we're all really searching for, which is to leverage everyone's talents and skills and come up with something really, uh, great. So, you know. So, you know, what I would propose is that, you know, our team take a step back, but that's not like a, that's not a turning our back on the group. It's saying we're, we need to tread lighter, uh, with the commission and then with the, with the creative council. And then really I'm going to look to the commission to say, what do you need from the city? Like, you know, David, if it's, if there's times where it's like, look, we need clarification on what it is your, what it is the city wants or needs, then we can provide that. But otherwise, I really think allowing the commission to drive where things go is the, is the appropriate course moving forward.
I think that's what we're hoping for. And I think we're ready for that. I mean, I think we had to start in one path and now we're getting our group.
Yeah.
And so, uh, the creative community as well. I will say also, I think the role of the commission is also have to have that twenty thousand foot view.
Yeah.
And say like, okay, wait, we just did like three student projects. Now we need to mix it up, right? That, or, you know, this is coming in twenty twenty-two. So how do we? So I think in terms of diversity and really making sure that we're pulling in from different corners of our community. I think that's part of our purview. Um, and I think, I think we'll get there. I appreciate you having that openness, Mayor sadness, to go, okay, it's kind of out of our comfort zone.
Right.
It's a leap of faith.
Yeah.
Um, but I think the team of the commission, like we have a really great commission here with a lot of good viewpoints and a lot of professionals, arts professionals.
Yeah.
That I think can really steer it. The other, um, quick mention I'll make is there is a practice to placemaking. There is a practice to community development using arts and culture. And I think that, um, education would be good, not only for your staff, but the commission as a whole too. So I am curious about how we can weave that in, looking at communities as best practice models.
Yeah.
I'm not stealing their ideas or their artsy projects necessarily, but there is a practice to placemaking. Definitely I'm learning more about.
No, I, I, I don't disagree with that. I think there's thoughtful integration of these concepts that don't end up being bolted on after the fact, but really are part of the conceptualizing a particular place and not missing out on an opportunity. Um, I do think is, um, is something that we'll continue to try to get, uh, better about, uh, as a city. So as we continue to grow and develop, we can integrate those concepts. Um, the other, the other, we'd be remiss if we didn't talk, just, you know, from a resource standpoint. I do think the discussion should be had between the commission and the city ongoing about where are we trying to go? And then practical realities of what resources will be required to do that. I think, you know, I think that's an important discussion to have and, and to be frank and candid about. I mean, you know, these things don't get done with, with no money. So I think as you guys clarify where it is you want to go and what it is you want to do. I just think, you know, whether that's David having ongoing discussions with staff or, or we come in every occasionally to meet with the commission or whatever. You got two council members who, uh, vote on budgets. So you, you, you do fortunately have that direct tie right to policymakers, which is great. Um, but I, I think that's probably one of those things that we should just continue to have a lot of dialogue about as we move forward.
Can I, can I mention something? Something that is just, I've thought about is are we allocating enough funding to the art, to be honest with you? I'm not sure what we have allocated. I mean, we're starting off, right? You know, but it, it seems low to me personally.
I, I think it's, um,
But.
I, I think it's an exciting time, Cecilia, just from the sense of, you know, we were fortunate enough to have some money through the Modern Age transaction that allowed us to do some investment. I think, and I'm deadly serious about this community center. I mean, I haven't had the chance to, I mean, we as city council and mayor's office haven't had a chance to really, we're, we're not anywhere near a fina, finality to that, right? We're just getting started. But for the first time ever, I think we have the actual opportunity to create a place where, um, art and lots of other things can occur in our community on a scale and a magnitude that I think we could all be very proud of. So I think, um, I think from that perspective, we are serious about investing in things that could become part of that canvas, if you will, right? So the performing arts side of things, the place, if you will, has always been, uh, hard for us to come up with. But I think with this community center, we will have a unique opportunity to invest in that. Um, ongoing, I think that's something that we should be talking about with the, with the city council. About what is the appropriate amount of money for the budget? But I think I've always been a big believer, if, if I understand and believe in whatever the vision is, is you're trying to create, then the funding conversation, I've just very seldom, never been, very seldom have I been in a position where I haven't been able to figure out how to find some money or figure out some way to get something done. But you all, we all have to get on the same page about what it is we're trying to accomplish and get excited about that. And I think that's just the part where that, that ongoing discussion of, okay, next year, here's what we want to tackle, Scott. And we've been talking about this for a while. So we're all, we all kind of know that this is something we want to get done. And that, that allows my staff to go to the city council during budget time and say, we've moved some things around and here's why we think this is a priority for our community in the upcoming year. Um, so I, I think we can get there and I, I think the arts commission will, will play a heavy role in taking what they hear from the creative council, looking at what their vision is, taking the cues from the city and putting that all together and saying, you know, David will come over to my office and say, hey, look, we, this is, this is something we should really try to pursue in this upcoming year. And that's, I think to your guys' point about building the bridge, I think that really is what kind of the arts commission is responsible for.
Yeah, that, that's very super helpful. So yeah, I mean, I, I think we can get together and, and create a new vision, our perspective and come up with some good ideas in conjunction with the other organizations that, uh, provide a lot of input in the creative council.
And I, and I, I think, and I don't want to speak for Megan here, but I think our intent from a staffing perspective, like I got way too many people on the payroll sitting in your meetings. Um, so, um, we're gonna, we're gonna scale that back significantly. And that's not us like being mad and taking our ball home. That's just, hey, you guys have said you're in a good spot and that you can lead and develop these things. Um, so I think Ross is, as far as I know, Megan's kind of slotting him for that role to be support. Um, but other than that, I don't think there's going to be a whole lot of staff.
Do great. And I do want to say like, oh, we had a tough meeting last meeting, but the city's been great. And so we know that they have jobs to do too.
Yeah.
Weird thing like, but we still have to get this stuff done. So I do want to, uh, a shout out to the city and staff as the people that you do have.
I, I, I frankly, I chalk this up more as like growing pains than I do anything else. And I think that's just a natural evolution of understanding that you're getting up on your feet and we don't need to be there as much anymore. And, um, we, we all want these things to live beyond any one particular individual or one particular initiative. It's got to live past any of us. So it's in our interest to see it be its own.
Yeah, it's, it's ready to blossom. And, and that's why, you know, we came up with core values and vision.
Yeah.
Past us that it's beyond us. It's going to continue.
Right.
And, but we felt that that was important. Do you, do you think, um, the, so the prescriptive, uh, nature of our groups on me? Um, do you, do you feel comfortable with, with how we operate or do we need to, to be a little more formal or are you?
I was gonna ask, what are your views?
Uh, about how you operate?
Yeah.
I, I mean, look, I'm, I'm an outcome-driven person and not a, I'm not a process and procedure individual. I think, I think what's going to be difficult for all of you and it's art more than science is building those relationships and maintaining those relationships as you still have to make decisions and prioritize. And Jocelyn's point, I've been here long enough to see several iterations of the creative groups trying to get together. And most of the time they can't weather this, the relationships can't weather the storm of decisions being made or priorities being made. And, and then their groups, they kind of fall apart. And so I think the interesting thing as a commission that I think will be challenging is how do you create a process where those relationships can, can make it through a year where you guys maybe say, you know what, this year we're going to invest in this because we think this is a priority. And you don't have thirty percent of the group say, I told you these guys weren't going to support us. This isn't worth anything. And they, that's, that's a, that's a really, that's a relationship building, tough, hard thing to, to do. Um, and, and so how, whatever process you have to go through to, to weather those storms, that's, that's up to you, I think.
Yeah, but I do have confidence that our creatives, at least the ones that are participating in these conversations, so many of them are professional.
Yeah.
And they, um, earn their living or at least part of their living
Yeah.
through art and culture. So, um, the level of professionalism there is very encouraging. And I'll tell you what, I can't speak for those individuals at all, but in my experience, they want to participate in the community. So that's an amazing asset. That's an amazing quality. And, um, and I'm confident that again, with kind of this new phase of the commission and with your
Yeah.
not only enthusiasm but confidence, if we can, partnership, I think is what it's all about.
Yeah, that's, that's a good observation. I mean, it's a good observation too, just in the evolution of the ecosystem that's here. Because I think fifteen years ago, you were, we were probably talking with a group of people that maybe weren't, uh, there weren't as many professionals that were as sophisticated in art and, and culture as we are now dealing with. And that adds, that certainly adds a dynamic. So, uh, part, partly for me, I'm curious to see as the cultural council grows, the creative council. I, I'm astounded every time I walk into city hall and see the talent that's displayed on our walls. I'm thinking, who are all these people? So it, it is humbling to see what really is actually in our community. If we can foster that, it, it's, I, I think there's extraordinary opportunities and.
And I think we can. I mean, we're in the middle of a pandemic and we've been twenty people per virtual session, which is just a difficult way to have a meeting like that. So there's a, there's a definite, uh, sense of value that people are getting from it, at least to this point. So I think we can continue that and grow, especially as we start meeting in person.
Well, we've got a, I mean, the art of these things too, not to try to use a pun there, but, um, we've got to empower your commission so that those groups seek value or see value in working with you. Because if it's a straight line to us and we're just making decisions, then they're not, they're going to just bypass you guys and have direct conversations with my staff. And that's not the intent. The intent is that you guys are the ones that are really driving this. Um, so we want to empower you as much as possible to be making those decisions.
Oh, absolutely.
I think, I think all those, I mean, that's a privilege. Thank you.
Oh, it's, it's well-earned. Uh, is there anything else that we need to clarify while we're all here? Megan, anything from your perspective with, because it's your team that, we got to go back and have this conversation with, but is there anything else from your perspective?
Um, maybe just more like points of order from last time of, um, the, the grant program. And, um, it seems like we need to come back next time with what, like, it seems like geographic area is, is where we're focusing on for this grant program. Is that correct?
From the city or from their perspective?
From the city to say like, here's where, like talking about these guardrails, it's like, or is this just open this time?
I, I think it was proposed that it was nickel plate district, uh, that was part of the, uh,
Mission?
Yeah. But there was some leeway outside of that.
Okay.
Like a percentage of those grants could go outside.
Percentage, we didn't know what the percentage was, but.
What I think is, is really important, and, and this is where for me as a commissioner, I don't have a clear understanding of when we're looking at the nickel plate district, what are those spaces that can be activated? You know, where, where are those places that the city, since it's city owned?
Yeah.
Would allow for creatives to perform or use. And so I, I don't think there's clarity to us or to the creatives of if, if in that grant, you know, you could say, if you're considering something in the nickel plate, these are the activated, these are the spaces in which you, you have the ability to perform or do something creative. But, but also opening it up so that it, you could have a, a creative event or something outside of that area. But with a focus that we have commitments in that particular area, obviously. But, but also just identifying, again, since we don't have an art center right now, where, where in terms of the city are those phases that you would allow ability for the creatives to utilize? And I don't think there's
Oh, that's a great point, Cecilia.
No clarity for me or I don't even know, to be honest with you.
Right.
So it's hard to kind of help guide or help to.
This is where I think our, um, so it's a two-way street on this question. I think our planning team can provide a list of municipal assets, but I'll put a caveat on that. This goes back to the, like the Wexler Launch Fisher's conversation. We can look at it through a municipal lens and say like, here are all the places that from our government perspective, we think art might work. But I would also look to you and the creative council, because there may be assets that I would drive by every day and be like,
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I, I didn't see the opportunity to engage or enact that space. And so I don't, what I don't want to do is by providing you a list of assets, make it sound like that's the only place you can be, because honestly, that might just be the limits of our creativity would tell you, here's forty-two places.
Right.
So I think we can definitely provide at a baseline, here are the areas that we could, we could come up with, but I don't, I don't want that to be interpreted as that's exhaustive.
And it's not because the creative council through this process, they already started to have conversations of other alternative spaces.
Yeah.
So it can open up to a larger extent. But I think identifying the inventory of venues, I guess, that's, that, that was one of, personally for me, one of the goals that I wanted to understand to try to shepherd people to.
I think we can, I, I think we can buy that.
Because we look, you know, look into, we have the nickel plate master plan, right?
Yeah, right. There's.
So that's a guiding point that, um, I think we can quickly get too prescriptive too, to your point, right?
Right.
Here's, here's it and that's not what we want. We want to be able to also come forward with ideas on what that could be. So I think if we use that as a framework and say, okay, generally nickel plate district, here's areas, come forward with ideas on where you think, and then we collaborate with the city and
Yeah.
feasible, if it's viable.
I think the other part that I would, I would really lean on you guys for on the arts commission side is I think by the nature of what we do in city hall, we're very much into physical space. We're into, we, we build roads, we build buildings, we build parks. Um, and, and we can work on how to create physical assets that have art represented in them. Where we don't, we really have no, uh, skill set or experiences in performing or performance art. Like that's not, it's not who we are. It's not what we're trained to do. And so I think balancing, so people do what they're familiar with. In the absence of, uh, knowing that or feeling comfortable in it, you're gonna, you're gonna default to, let's do another mural. Because that's what we understand. So I think the arts commission, I would really look to you guys to create the right balance that achieves a vibrant community, but brings different elements that, you know, I, I just don't think if you were to look across my staff, we really have a lot of experience or any experience in that, in that side of things. Excluding like concerts at the amphitheater, obviously we can do that. But, uh, other than that, I, I really think that blend where we achieve the, the utmost vibrancy in our community out of the resources we have, figuring out that balance between physical and performance, that is not going to come from city hall. Uh, you know, that's, that's got to come from you guys.
But
Yeah, right.
I'm sorry to say, that's good. I would like to see city staff help us. Um, I think all we need are the boundaries of the nickel plate district.
Yeah.
And being able to make those very clear
Sure.
to creatives or the folks that want to brainstorm.
Yeah.
The other thing I'll say, the venue behind us, the amp is crucial. Until we have more space and more venues and more opportunities for gatherings, um, frankly, I feel like if the city parks department is, um, programming that stage a hundred percent without any openings for
Hmm.
something that comes from the community instead of programming from the parks department, we're missing an opportunity. So, um.
I don't disagree with that. I, I think.
It, it doesn't have to be every Saturday night.
Right.
I'm saying, but. I'm saying, but it's been, um, off limits to the city. And, um, I, that could be a great opportunity, even just starting to open that up just a little bit.
And I think that was the whole purpose of having this hub, is so that we knew, like, okay, when is it activated, when is it not? When is it available, when is it not? Or when, so nobody knows.
Right.
When spaces are available or.
So I think there's a, there's a philosophical logistical question you bring up. Uh, I would tell you, the, the amphitheaters philosophically, I think, has evolved over time. I think, I think Sarah Sanquist shares, um, the belief that I do, which is that it is really the community's asset. Now, we need, we balance that with, okay, we're going to try to put on these events to, because people like them and we're going to have, you know, try to bring people down here and engage. But at the same time, if there are community organizations that want to create and do things on that amphitheater, there's no reason why that, they should be excluded from that opportunity. Um, so I, I just, so there's the philosophical thing. I think we're over that hurdle. Uh, the, the, you probably just be discussing to what extent, probably. And that's just an open discussion, an ongoing discussion. The logistical side should not be that difficult for us to figure out, like, how to communicate effectively, what dates are open and what, what have you. Like, we should be able to do that. Um, because we book, we try to book the stuff that the city's doing, we book months in advance. So we should be able to clearly tell someone, hey, look, these Fridays are available or the Saturdays are available. That's what you need.
I mean, I'd be, in an ideal world, I guess, it'd be nice to have what the parks and recreation programming looks at the end of each year so that the creatives can then, again, you know.
I, I think you can get pretty close. I mean.
See, you know, what, where, where they can.
I think, I think we're refining our amphitheater game plan. Um, I don't want to get too much in the weeds on that particular issue today, but, I mean, I do think you have your kind of staples, Tuesday night, summer concert series, Saturday morning farmer's market. Um, and then they're, they're trying to sprinkle in a few kind of marquee concerts. Um, but, but, so I think we can, we can provide that high-level schedule, uh, pretty, pretty easily with the exception of maybe a few concerts that we just don't own the. When you're trying to book like a national act, you don't, you don't typically have the opportunity to say the specific date. You usually have to work with them on that. We can, we can work through those issues.
But to be honest, and it's something that as a commission, we probably need to know, like, is that space, like, for the farmer's market? And I, and I, and it's bad on me because I should know this question, right, as a commissioner, but I don't, like, is that, is the amphitheater space, uh, open to anyone that wants to use it during the farmer's market, um, for free or, you know, I.
They typically book music, um, for the, during the farmer's market. They'll have, um, the bluegrass music or what have you during that timeframe to kind of, they're trying to curate a particular experience, I think, for people at the farmer's market. Um, but, but those are policy discussions that could be had. If, if the creatives come up with a concept that you guys really like and think would work well with the farmer's market, you know, again, I don't think we should preclude anything from being discussed and chewed through. And I think parks is probably the only department that needs to be a stakeholder in the creative council and, and, and ongoing discussion with you guys because your canvas and your programming side, they're going to overlap so many times that that relationship should be, should be there so that really a lot of these conversations get worked out before they ever.
Yeah.
Elevate to like this discussion.
Because, for instance, like, if the creatives knew that after the farmer's market's done, and that space is open, that there could be a performance or something else, you know, it would, it, maybe people would stay and then they go and have lunch around the businesses, you know? I don't know, you know, that opens up an opportunity for them to.
So herein lies the alignment part, right? So this is where you guys build the bridge and, uh, kind of break down the doors. This, we deal with this internally. You know, then you're going to have a conversation with Public Works, because they're going to say, oh, my God, I got a concert on Friday night. I got to break that down. Then I have a farmer's market Saturday morning, and now you want to have an event Saturday night. Those aren't things, I'm not throwing that up as an obstacle for whatever you just brought up. I'm just saying, if we all get in alignment that that's a goal that we want to do, and we're all excited about wherever we're trying to take this, then I can go work through the issues that Public Works has. That's my responsibility to go knock down those impediments. But we all kind of have to pregame that so that we're all in alignment. Because otherwise, you just get these random points of conflict where things blow up and everybody's upset and frustrated, and everyone just kind of takes their ball and goes home. If, if this group does the legwork ahead of time, so we're all kind of in alignment around these big picture ideas, like, if David says, hey, you know, as chair of this thing, next year, here's where we want to go, and these are the things we want to do, and we all, we're like, yeah, that makes a lot of sense, then I'm going to pregame that with the operational side so that the creatives and the, and the logistical people all have a positive interaction with one another and not a, oh, what the hell is this? Why do I have to deal with this? So, um, that, that is, I think that's kind of the heavy lifting of the commission so that we can, we can tackle those things. But I feel really good about where this is at. I don't think you're going to find from me or from Megan or from our team, um, any kind of opposition to this. I think our team is just learning how to interact best with all of you. And we're going to do what we can to support you. And the other thing, I mean, it has to be said, we're likely to fail a handful of times in this endeavor, and we're going to try things that are swings and a miss. But that's kind of the Fisher's culture, like, we're, if we're going to be entrepreneurial, we're going to try some stuff that just falls flat on its face. And so, you know, okay, as long as we all have a relationship and a trust, then we'll, we'll suffer those failures together. Um.
There's a lot of homewrecks too.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, right. We'll just talk about those. Um, anything else, David, from, from your.
I think, um, I think this is awesome. I really appreciate the opportunity you taking the time.
Yeah, no, this is great.
For us. Um, so just to be clear, so we're on the same page. So you're in charge.
I think I'll help oversee it, but then Ross will be.
And he'll be helping day-to-day.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's.
Wasn't there discussion, and I don't know if we got to this, to finalize, when we were going to meet? Because that was.
Yeah, there was, uh, so Tony started a discussion, um, weeks ago about the frequency of our meetings. Do we need to meet, uh, on the current schedule or can we scale that back? And so, you know, with, um, without having a, having a clear objective, um, he was suggesting that we go, we meet less. And, which I think is okay, as long as we're, you know, I think we need to regroup and I think we need to build out this vision further and then see what kind of work that that's going to take in the coordination of those things and see if, okay, do we, are we fine meeting less or do we need to be, you know, what is the.
That is entirely your guys' decision. And now that I don't have nine people going to the meeting, you can meet as often as you, you would like. Um, no, I mean, honestly, again, you're, that's just really your guys' purview moving forward. And I think that ebbs and flows, right?
Yeah.
And Roger, it's hard to develop a vision once every quarter. You know, sometimes those need short bursts and sprints to get that right. And then if you're in execution mode, then sometimes those aren't, you maybe don't have to meet as frequently, but that's, it's your guys' decision. So.
And maybe there's set meetings just to have it on the calendar, but with, yeah, the, the understanding we may not meet, but just put it at the plate holder just in case. But I think right now, well, it, I don't know, you know, uh.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. I mean, let, let's get together on it and then, and come up with a plan and get everybody's agreement.
I think we have a main meeting on the books.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Midnight. So at least we.
So I think the only thing, David, that would be helpful, post this to me if you guys digest or email back and forth. If there's a particular deliverable or work you want from Ross in preparation for that meeting that he can provide to you guys so that you can have a productive meeting, that would probably be, you know, helpful as to, because we're going to have to kind of hit reset with our staff and, and what, going forward, what do you want from staff at those meetings so that we can make sure he can be successful when he's, when he's.
Absolutely. And we already started some dialogue on that as far as minutes when those are being delivered and agendas and stuff like that, so there's enough time.
Okay.
But we'll get back on, um, on track with that. Is there anything from us that you guys want to see differently or?
I, I think, um, the only thing that I would say that would be helpful, uh, that's just timely. And I know Tom is on this committee for, uh, the community center. But we'd be remiss if we didn't have the Arts Commission maybe provide, as you guys develop your plan and you talk to your creative council, I know Tom's going to do a good job providing information, but there's a whole group of folks that are been, been involved in this art conversation. You know, what I think, what I think will come out of this uh, small group of task forces, if you will, that Todd Zimmerman, Councilman Zimmerman's working on, is like a vision statement. So what is our community, just from a vision perspective, what do you want in this facility? And so if there's elements that, from your guys' perspective, you want to put together, I, I don't think that that would be a bad idea to, to try to provide that. And that's not saying that Tom isn't doing a fantastic job providing that voice too. But we're talking about, you know, the most significant investment in our community's arts and culture and a variety of other things that the community's ever seen. So.
From a timing perspective, so I was thinking that could be a good point of discussion at our next meeting.
What's that?
It could be a good point of discussion for the commission at our next meeting, but I don't know from a timing.
It's fine. That would be tim, timely. I mean, I think Zimmerman's group is just now, they got a community survey out. I mean, they're, they're, they're still in the early stages of this. So I, I gave them a goal of a hundred and twenty days to have that put together, I believe. And they're, you know, they're, they're still very early on. So I think by the end of May, if you guys were to have a document that said, here, here's some things that we would like to see incorporated, I don't believe that that would be too far out, but I'll double check with Jordan. She's working, uh, on one of Megan's teams. She's working on that. And if it's sooner than that, we'll communicate that back to you guys. Um, but it's been interesting even in the survey results so far to see what people have said and what they're interested in and, um.
Did you guys all get this survey?
Yeah.
Did that go out to everybody?
Right.
I don't know if I saw that. I mean, I just overlook it.
I'll, I'll, uh, send it back to the group after.
And I, and I think from the arts perspective, where we need to go a little deeper into it is just, it's one thing to say we need a performance space. I think, okay. But then what kind of programs do we think people?
Yeah.
Would want to see that's arts-related? Like, uh, I, I was talking to Jordan.
The culture side.
Yeah, yeah. It's like, um, Jordan was saying today that the survey was highlighting people wanting dance class or, um, pottery.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So you got to go a little more granular than just, we want a dark box theater. What, what do you want to see happening in the facility, uh, from an activity perspective, I think would be helpful, uh, for, for us to know.
And even from, um, environmental perspective, meaning envi, like, what is the feel you want to have when.
Exactly.
Go there.
Uh, could not agree more, because one of the interesting dynamics is if you have an aquatic center where you have, um, a basketball court, how do you create spaces within this facility that feel very distinctly different? And, and I think that will have to help. And we're so far away from like having a design team or anything. I don't, we're not there yet. Really just this vision statement. But that vision statement should, should have some of those components in it as to, you know, like, for me personally, I don't want to build a metal shed.
Exactly.
That's like a, just a massive building for turf and a basketball court. It needs to feel like a community facility. So having those conversations from the art community so that when we build it, it isn't a swing and a miss, like, God, I don't want to. This is cold or it doesn't feel like we want. I think that's helpful. All right. Anything else, you guys?
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
We'll hit reset.
Oh, he's been dying to say something.
I just want to know, uh, it, it's really hard to hear back here, but I, but Ailey's taking nice notes for me. Does anything here change our eleven hundred dollar grant?
No.
Do you want to do?
The eleven hundred dollar grant.
We're still going to get it.
Yeah, I mean, you don't want it to change either. I don't think I'm going to brought that up.
Yeah.
You're good.
Don't say anything, why?
Skip right on up.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.